Shut your cellphone ringers off if you would. Get your microphone there, Don, if you would. Perfect, thank you. Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dan.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Sure.
Here. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do that, no.
I do not either. Item number four is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
And a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the agenda. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Agenda is approved. So at this time, would anyone care to make a public comment? Alright, public comment is closed, there being no comments. Item number five, appoint acting director of equalization. Lori's resignation is for this Friday. And since we are not meeting again before that time, we do need to appoint an acting director of equalization to begin the following Monday, which would be, is it February first? Do I have a calendar?
Yeah, it is, because the second is the next meeting.
Okay, so we need to appoint someone to fill that job starting February first. The deputy director, obviously is Matt, and he would be the preferred choice unless anyone else has, someone else they'd like to nominate. I did talk to him about it, and he gladly will take over the position and serve as acting director of equalization.
I move appointment of Matt to the acting director of equalization.
Second.
So I have a motion by Don, second by Joe, to approve Matt Archer as acting director of equalization beginning February first. And that obviously runs until we find a replacement. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, did, did you have a comment?
I just had a question.
Yes.
How long is that position open, or is it just open until we fill it?
It's open until we fill it. We do have, I know at least one application in. I don't know if we have any others, so we do, at some point, need to start talking about interviewing, because the commissioners will interview this person, so.
Department level positions, we have in the past, have had some difficulty finding those, and, you know, we want to get the best candidate we have. So are we just doing a local newspaper and job service, or is there another option that we have? I know YPG offered to help us advertise.
It's in the job service on the, on the county website, and that's basically all we do, unless you want it somewhere else, we'll put it somewhere.
Well, it is a very important position, and, and it might not be a bad idea to cast a wide net.
Is this State County Association, do they have a job for?
I can send it to Chris Jacobson, and she can send it out, and then she's got all the counties.
Alright, so I'm going to call for that vote again, because we kind of stopped in the middle of it. So all in favor of appointing Matt Archer as acting director of equalization, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mr. Archer is now, will be, February first, acting director of equalization. Next item, Mr. Slachek, spring load limit discussion. At the last meeting, there was a question whether we wanted to change the, what we had adopted. So, any commissioners want to comment on the discussion from last time?
Mike, what do you recommend? You're, you know more about the roads than any of us here, and I trust your opinion. What do you recommend to us?
Well, it's, it's a tough, tough deal there, because, like I said, if you do it for one pit, you need to do it for the rest. And just looking at the Johnson Bridge pit, you're looking at roughly eight miles there to get to a state highway. Callens, there's another six. So, I guess, at that aspect, it's, I don't recommend doing that, I guess, but, ultimately, it's up to you guys.
Maybe too late for the discussion this year, but maybe in the, wherever we end tonight, revisit for next year's, put it on the pit owners to core, and if it's, we could set some standards, you get seven tons if you're, if the road is X amount, and the, six tons, if, you know, if you have so much asphalt, so much base, to do core samples on it. I don't know, something we can talk about coming next year, but, you know, I looked, what you sent here, you know, like Brookings, I don't think we want to go to that extent in Brown.
Well, but, and that's the next question, is what condition are their roads in compared to ours?
Right. But they've got, I mean, they call out every road in which, I don't think we want to get that detailed, but.
Because I personally look at, like, Johnson Bridge right now, that road, that's not in the greatest shape right now. South of Callens, County Road 102, that's not, that's starting to need some help, too.
So you're suggesting we stay at six?
Right.
So unless there's a commissioner who feels otherwise, we don't have to take any action tonight, because we've already passed a resolution.
Let's see if there's any public comment, I think.
Sure. Cliff, do you want to speak again, or are you good with speaking last time?
My feelings on it.
Yep. Okay, any other comments about this? Okay. So again, unless there's a commissioner who feels we need to change direction from what we did at the previous meeting, there won't be any action taken. Don, are you good with what we did? Dan?
Yeah, my only question is, from Growmark, when are we going to know when they make their decision? What was that date? And, because right now, the load limits are off of that road, correct? And if they end up getting an agreement, they'll pay us the check. If they don't get an agreement, then that road still has no load limit. So, do we have any idea? I believe we signed that resolution in September. And so, you know, Joe and Don, do you guys know when we're supposed to hear back from them?
Nothing other than what I read last meeting.
What, when, what was that event?
March.
I guess my only concern with that is, by March, in all likelihood, we'll have load limits on, and there won't be any on that road.
Yeah.
And so, if the deal doesn't go through, which unfortunately does happen sometimes, then we're, we're likely going to have some damage on that road. Would you say that's a fair assessment?
There's a chance of it.
Okay, there's, there's a chance, so. If the deal falls through, are we going to place a load limit then on that road? Or are we just going to leave it without a limit?
I would say we do. We also have the state grant, money that's awarded to that, so.
Anything further? Alright, it looks like our resolution stands as of last meeting.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Drive safe going home. Next item, District Three, proposal to work on the comprehensive plan. Go ahead, Don.
Well, at our last meeting, I handed out a copy of the letter that I received from Greg Henderson, outlining the help that he would, that District Three would be willing to provide in the rewriting of our comprehensive plan, and probably, to a lesser extent, on the Article Five. Any questions on it? It's pretty clear, I think, what he says it'll do.
Yes.
Well, my recommendation, and if it needs to be a motion, that we extend out to them, an offer based on what they proposed here. And they just brought copies of maybe seven or eight other counties' comprehensive plans in, which I had requested. And they, he did bring in a summary, that he had gone through all these, and, and highlighted the pages that contained to livestock zoning.
On the other, on the comprehensive plans?
Yes. In Article Five.
He said he was going to make a copy of that for all of the rest of you.
I guess, Don, my only concern is, all the zoning ordinance changes, we do need to be based off our comprehensive plan. You actually have to have written compliance with the comprehensive plan. And I agree that both of them need to be done, but I, I guess I would like to see the comprehensive plan done before we do a lot of these changes, because if we're doing them at the same time, how do we know the changes are going to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
I couldn't have said it better.
So, I guess.
But I think we, we can, we can highlight the areas within the Article Five, that we have heard conversations in the past, being of great deal of interest, and, and we could start working with the groups that have those opinions to see if there's a resolution.
I, I would, would agree Article Five, and I know that's what we're going to discuss next. But when we're doing the comprehensive plan, I would also urge you guys to look at the zoning minimum lot sizes of all districts. I mean, for example, World Transitional is 20 acres. Does that make sense anymore? I would say probably not. I know we've also, in the time you and I have been on the planning commission, is, is two acres still the right size for commercial? I don't know if it is, because we're getting a lot more smaller commercial enterprises. So I would ask that you guys look at all the districts and lot sizes, and not just egg, but look at them all, and see if they're still appropriate.
I agree. What you just have is that comprehensive plan, or is that?
These are comprehensive ones for Beadle, Brown, Brookings, Davidson, Lincoln, Minnehaha, and Goddington. So on the eastern side of the state, all larger counties.
I believe, I want to say Lawrence County, is Hill City in Lawrence County? I know it's West River, but they just updated theirs.
I've got a copy of that one at home.
You do, okay.
Got their executive.
There, yeah, it doesn't have all of the statistics that ours is encumbered with, which should be an addendum. Yeah, it's, it flows very nice. You know, and, and our comprehensive plan in and of itself is very sound. And I've always been of the opinion to take the comprehensive plan, take out all the data and all the figures, and compress that, and then put the figures and stuff in an appendix, so you can always update those on their own.
District Three has said that they can do the figure part relatively rapid.
Yeah, you know, so going through that comprehensive plan, and I know at one time, the planning commission had went through a bunch of it, and whether they actually proposed a lot of changes to it or not, I have not seen. But we do have to be careful. When you need to tackle something, you can't, you can't tackle the whole pile all at once, you have to be, stay kind of focused on what you're trying to do from a high level, and then work your way down into some of those details. And I think that's kind of what this meeting tonight is about, is to start formulating that plan, and how we're going to go about tackling it. Because Dan has brought up something that he would like to see changed. We know telecom needs to be changed. We know wind needs to be gone through. We know we need to update our ordinance to meet all of the legislation that was done around zoning last year. So there's a huge task ahead of us when we talk about updating our entire ordinance. To me, the reason we're starting with Article Five is because it is the most controversial one out there. And last year, there was an effort to update it without doing the comprehensive plan. And that, that did not pass the commission, and that's why we're here, is these five people sitting here need to decide the direction of the county. From input from the audience, input from people who want to just submit comments, take all of that, and this, and everything we've been through over the last four or five years, and to figure out where our county can exist in the middle. And I don't know how, how else to say it. We've got so much controversy, and we need to get that pendulum somewhere in the middle, basing it on what works in other counties, and why can't what other counties do work here with some tailoring to our county, because we all know Yankton County is a little unique. So, so I do want to caution not to get caught up in, in Section 1503 needs the word "the" taken out. We need to look at the bigger picture and how we approach, especially Article Five. So with that, the topic that we're supposed to be discussing right now is the District Three proposal to do some supplemental work in the background for that comprehensive plan. And Don has talked to them about that, and they put down on paper what they feel they can do to help support where we want to go, and I think they've made it clear, they don't want to be standing at the podium directing the commission what to do. And I think that's a fair approach for them.
Don, is the, the planning commission then going to, with District Three's help, do the comprehensive plan? Are we gonna, the commission going to do it like we're going to do Article Five?
That guy right there is going to run it.
No, I'm, okay, so is the planning commission going to be involved in the change of the comprehensive plan? Because I mean, it's kind of been determined that they're not going to be involved in the Article Five changes, so I'm just trying to do.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is, yeah, I'm sure they're, they're going to want your input in some direction as far as what, what you want to make sure that you see in the comprehensive plan, but I think overall, we know we need to go through that process, and they'll be the ones that will be focused on it the most, so.
Thanks.
You know, from, for the comprehensive plan, I, I think it definitely needs updating. I think it'd be good for District Three to, to assist in that. I do think the, call it the meat of the comprehensive plan is there. I think it really needs to be reformatted. Nobody's going to read through that entire booklet.
Hundred and forty-five acres.
Just to kind of see what Yankton County's all about, and the, and the trend with comprehensive plans now is to get rid of all that fat, and, and really give kind of the storyboard of what the county is and what it looks like. I think that information's in there, it just needs reformatting. There's going to be certain areas that need some tweaking and updating, just with the age of, of the plan versus what the, where the county's at today. So I would, you know, I would support going forward with that, with, with some help from District Three. I guess I would caution if we're, if anyone's thinking of drastically changing the comprehensive plan, or rewording things, or intents of the comprehensive plan. I don't know if we do that at Planning and Zoning, or if that's a, a larger committee almost, but.
I, I think, I think this is the first step, Joe.
Yeah.
And then Gary and I'll sit down, and we'll talk about a game plan to include additional meetings for input, when we bring it to the county commission for review, and present that plan to the commission. But this is the first step.
Okay, and I guess on that, since it kind of ties in, but I, I do feel, has been brought up, there are many changes that need to happen with the ordinance. And I think, I guess I go back to, I think the information is in the comprehensive plan, that we can follow that. I don't see why we would, we would hold up. I think we, and we've had this conversation over and over and over, and kick the can, and ever come up with a new reason why we should move it, and new reason to move it. I think we need to, as, and we discussed, as a commission, to bring Article Five to the commission level, get public input, get some good reviews done, try to make something that works for, for the majority of people, and then we need to move forward on wind, towers, commercial, other things. So, I would not wait to get this updated to move forward, I guess.
I make a motion to make the offer as set forth in the written correspondence provided to the commission last meeting, to have District Three assist.
Second.
I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to approve the proposal from District Three to assist in updating our comprehensive plan. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And we are right on time, and it is 6:25, and we are at item number eight, which is Article Five amendment discussion. So I kind of, I guess, touched on where I envisioned this meeting going tonight. I want to make it clear, nine o'clock, at nine o'clock, we're done, and we'll continue the discussion another night. I think three, two and a half hours of discussing it at one time is plenty. So, everybody sees the clock getting close to nine o'clock, remind me. So, we'll have some discussion at the commission level, we're going to open it up to public comment. Well, and then we'll bring it back to the commission to close out the night. And again, I think tonight is about a broad discussion of where we envision Article Five ending up. We all know we have a lot of discussion around lot size. Do we stay with an acre size, or do we go to the model that many of those counties have, which is to limit concentration? Quarter-quarter, one per eighty, something like that. So we have that discussion, we can touch on. We have the general overall organi- organization of the article except, itself. When you read Article Five, there's some redundancy in that, in how it's written. The proposal that was put forth, which is in the packets, it was on the online packet, is an attempt to reorganize essentially what was there, so it flows better, so you know exactly what's expected of a CUP for an animal feeding operation. We have classes that we can discuss, we have A through F right now. There is some controversy at whether Class F requires a CUP, or it does not. One side believes it does, one side believes it doesn't, and that tells you the language and the ordinance is not clear. And so certainly, we need to discuss that, and in the end, who needs a CUP? Who needs state permitting? And where can we fit in special permitted uses? And those were approved last year in the legislation. And that came out of a court case, out of Turner County, I think. That's why the legislation was passed. And then we have setbacks. Right now, Class F has no setback, and that was pretty controversial in the county. And the other setbacks, some folks feel all need to be the same across the county. Right now, we have a couple different tiers of setbacks, depending on where you live. We've got just simple definitions of what an AFON, a KEFOR. We've got requests to put in a right-to-farm. So there, so there's lots of what I, what I would say is an overview and kind of general direction of what the commissioners are thinking, that we can discuss tonight. And again, we've got conditional uses, permitted uses, and the special permitted uses that we can, we can talk about. So, Joe, did you want to walk through some of, some of that at this time?
Might be a good place to start, I guess, just, can we get this up on the overhead? Way to go, Val. Is that a wireless mouse? Can I just have it? Thank you. There, can everybody see that a little better? I don't know that we're going to really get into the weeds to start, I think we'll just show what, some of the things that were discussed and looked at. At the planning and zoning level, the definition of agriculture was contested. One of the main things, main reasons, I guess, is it's contradictory to what it says later in the ordinance. So agriculture is a permitted use in the ordinance. According to this, it would include raising and feeding of livestock and poultry. But then it also says that, that needs a CUP. So that was some of the contested verbiage. And then it also excludes commercial grain elevators and processing facilities, and I guess I said I wasn't getting into the weeds, but I'm on the first line here. The reason that this was talked about, and, and possibly stricken, is it's not used anywhere in the ordinance. This definition is only used in one place in the ordinance, so the thought was to just put that definition with the intent of it into where it's used. So Longshore, there's some definitions that, that were talked about. So this overall document was tr- an attempt at an attempt at compiling what was discussed at the planning and zoning level prior to and keep in some of the things that seemed to be agreeable by parties and take out things that were not agreeable by parties. And then again, mostly to reorganize the flow of the document and the requirements to make it clear and concise on what those are. So in doing that, some things that just seemed like they were maybe nitpicky were removed. And things that seemed like they had merit were left in, just reorganized. So definitions were updated.
Joe, scroll back for a second there.
Sure.
So, because everybody's going to look at the numbers. So the numbers there, that Class F that says fifty to four ninety-nine, those are not finalized. That is an area that needs a lot of discussion. So I don't want anybody to walk away and say, well, that's what they're doing, because that is not what we're doing. This is a format. We're encouraging you to look at this format because those little details are what's going to take most of the conversation. Okay?
Thank you. So animal units, of course, stayed the same. I made sure to include cow-calf pairs in the definition. That's following the state. You know, again, just trying to take ambiguity out of some of these things and make it clear and concise. What requires a CUP? What does not? What requires state permitting? What does not? There should be no questions. If someone reads through this, they should be, should know exactly where they stand. This definition was changed. And I shouldn't say was changed, it's proposed to change. This is one of the discussions. And this was an attempt at making things clear. Because there's a lot of questions of if I have a cow-calf operation out to pasture and I bring them in and feed them for, or I bring them in for calving, and I bring them in for vaccination, and I bring them in for whatever, and I'm over my forty-five days, am I now a CAfo? And I don't think that's the intent at all of the of the definition of a CAfo, but it's, it left ambiguity. People were concerned. And so this is an attempt to define exactly what it is. So again, any definitions that have any changes are highlighted. This is a new introduction. This is something Nebraska does. They define three different manure classes, solid, liquid, and semi-solid. We can get into that later. Permitted special use, that was put in because the state has now recognized those as a category. We have special permitted uses in our county today. They're just not called that.
So only the definitions that are associated with agriculture are included there. That is not a comprehensive list of the definitions in our ordinance. It was only associated with egg.
So here's where that definition of agriculture just got moved. This is literally the only place in the entire document that that definition is referenced. But there's, I don't remember which county. There's one or two counties that simply, I think Brown does. They just simply state it right here, what's a permitted use. They don't say agriculture. And then you have to look at the definition of what's agriculture. They just put right in here what's allowed. So it's the same definition. What was removed? I gotta look at this again, make sure it's worded right. But long and short of it is anything that's an AFo by definition is allowed. CAfos would be conditional use permits as well as grain elevators. So here's introducing the permitted special uses. These these in blue are already in the ordinance. They're treated as special permitted uses, which that definition was added there. But basically, it's a permitted use that has requirements to it.
So Section 516, is that the lot size? I guess I can open it up here. Just so you can see what a special permitted use is. So essentially, you can have a home in egg, but we've always said it has to be on a certain lot size. Well, that's a condition. I wanna lick my fingers so bad. No, 516's the new one.
Okay, yep.
So scroll down to 516 so they can see 516. So residence requirements here. And these are in our current ordinance.
A lot of them are in the current ordinance.
Several of them are, you know, so you can have a construction and new residents must comply with minimum setbacks. That's in our current ordinance as stated in 519. And again, this is because it's truly a special permitted use. We just haven't treated it that way.
So I think what's in red on here is in the ordinance and what's in blue was added. And so what was added here is that a new home has to meet the same setbacks from a CAfo as a CAfo has to meet from a home. Does that make sense?
I think it's important you talk about what a special permitted use is, is that if it meets the requirement, it is a ministerial task and it has to be granted without any notification. And so if you guys are gonna allow, you know, construction and new residences, that's no longer a conditional use for, or variance on two acres. That's a building permit issued by Mr. Vedder, and it has to be issued. And so what's happening there a lot is then the neighborhood isn't notified of what's going on.
But they are today.
What's that?
They are today. It's a permit. It's a building permit today.
Or a variance, which most of them are variances. That requirement, the notification, the notification, which is a notification. What I'm saying is what you're proposing, though, for these construction of new residents and the two acres is now that's not subject to the variance process. But what that also means is there's no notification.
But the two acres is not a final deal. That's another.
Two acres is definitely not final. Not everybody might know what a special permitted use is. But to break that down is there's zero notification. And if it meets the interpretation of the zoning administrator, the permit must be issued as a ministerial task.
Yep.
So, so we're aware, the notification requirement is gone. And it has to be issued if it meets the standard.
Right. And again, we already do that with two and three are currently in our ordinance. So it's a building permit with basically rules to it. And yes, the variance process is still valid. If you need a variance, it still goes through the variance process.
Why should my neighbor care if I build another house on my property?
And that's part of why it's there. And there's certain things that, in my opinion, neighbors maybe need to know, and there's certain things that don't. And that's where, that's traditionally where the difference between a building permit and a conditional use permit came in. And really, what that special permitted use, it's a building permit, but there's some rules attached to it. Where were we?
You were at special permitted uses up there.
I'm still going up. Okay, so in special permitted uses, what's in the proposal, and again, this is all, would be the dwellings, single-family, including modular homes. Dwellings, two-family pursuant to this 516. So dwellings, additional farm in excess of one, that's currently in the ordinance. Basically, a special permitted use. We just never called it that. Manufactured homes is in there as a special permitted use. So one thing that is in here is so animal feeding operations would be a special permitted use because they're permitted. You don't need a CUP for them, but there are setback requirements that are tied to them, as well as manure management, or, you know, manure application requirements that are are part of that. And that's, you know, the standard incorporate within, you know, liquid incorporate within twenty-four hours, solid incorporate within a week, I believe it is. But so that's just in there to make it clear that you don't need a CUP for these. And then existing concentrated animal feeding operations we had put in there to allow them to expand. So if somebody does build and encroaches on where you may want to expand, you have still that opportunity. And that's in there today. There's that opportunity to expand today. So it's just trying to make it a little more clear to follow, I guess. So then we get into conditional uses. Animal feeding operation is stricken. That's not a conditional use, but a concentrated animal feeding operation is. And that goes back to that definition where that distinction is made. I think the only other thing I don't remember was this? Is this in our current?
Yeah, that is.
I don't have a lot of information. Some of these, like I said, were talked about at Planning and Zoning and if it wasn't really contested, I just left them in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is something that's in there today. The spreading injection, basically if you're carrying it from another county and bringing it into Yankton County, then you need a permit for that. And that's in there today. I think it's just more verbiage to clean it up.
I think it made it clear that it applied to outside of the county.
Right.
Not in the county. And today, there's a lot of question around that definition.
Sure. Yeah, you're right.
And so it's clarification to make sure.
Swimming pools was taken away from CUPs. Yeah, that should just be a permitted accessory use, I believe. And to be clear, in that definition of a swimming pool, I don't think I have it in here. It is for personal swimming pools. It's not for any commercial or park or whatever. It'd be personal use. And I think subdivisions is defined, that must have been added at Planning and Zoning.
I believe so.
As a CUP. And depending on where the acre sizes go, that may just go away as well. Then it would be, I mean, you'd truly have to rezone. But anyway. So here's gonna be one of the higher points of discussion, and it's gonna be the lot sizes. Before we get into this, I do wanna say I know, I know there's a lot of support for the twenty acres. I know there's a lot of support for two acres. There's support for somewhere in between. I feel strongly, we need to address it somehow. It has to be done. And I say that, one, the level of variances that we've given over the last how many years. Really, we're not following our own ordinance. But two, the twenty-acre rule proposes problems for people and individuals involved in agriculture as well. We don't really see it as much, but you know, Dallas Hansen's seed seed shed down there. There's no legal reason we should have passed a variance for five acres on that. If you look at the requirements of a variance, none of it meets, and I voted for it. But if that were to end up in court, or it would have, if that was a contested topic, we would have lost. Because there's nothing in our ordinance that says you can have a smaller lot size if it's related to agriculture. It says it has to be twenty acres, period. So it has to be, wherever we end up, something has to be addressed and fixed. I've talked to some other people who've been approached to do something either similar or something ag-related, but they never even attempted to come in for variance because they just, they wouldn't get it, and they didn't wanna but it would have been on, you know, three acres or five acres or whatever. So it is impacting the county. We've gotta come to some resolution on that. So what's in here is two acres. That's the starting point. I don't know if anyone wants to weigh in yet.
No, we're not gonna have that discussion right now. But the other option here, again, is the model that Turner, Mini-Haha do. Lincoln does it too, is concentration control. So many homes on forty acres, so many homes on eighty acres, et cetera. And there's different ways they handle that. So that, if we went that route, that whole one size goes away. It's a concentration control from there. So those are the two theories that we all have to think about.
Well, three. Yeah, it would either just be a lot size, period. So, well, two theories, I guess, yeah. But it's either twenty acres, two acres, somewhere in between, or it's an acre size with a maximum population density, call it. Similar to Turner County. This essentially is what was moved to special permitted uses. This was stricken, and I don't remember why for sure. 501D, nonprofit religious, that would apply to our colonies. So I believe that's why that was written in there to start with. You know, I don't believe a 501D would apply to just a regular horse camp or something. I'd have to verify that. Yard requirements. Here again, that got moved to permitted special use.
Can you go back up a second? Yard requirements?
Yep.
If, and I know this is just you guys' proposal at this point, but if you don't adjust that, then you're just gonna be given all kinds of variances for yard with. Because when, if you go down to two acres, 75 feet is a long ways for each side. And that's what we run in, that's what we run into a lot in the residential areas. I would just say, whatever you decide on the lot size.
So it's, so it's.
If it gets less than, than that, you need to look at that, too.
So it's whatever we decide for lot sizes. And yes, it's a very good point, but I think the conversation around the lot size is going to be the one, once that's decided, this will fall out.
Well, but you just, you need to remember that, then. Because if you don't change that, then you're still gonna be given all kinds of variances for setbacks.
This was, did we lose the planning and zoning, right?
Yes.
Okay, here's, we went through these, traffic visibility. This was talked about at planning and zoning, is why it was stricken. We're not gonna. We didn't think it was a good use of time for the zoning administrator necessarily to approve or disapprove some of these things. It's a long short of it, is you can't have trees right in that traffic visibility. But can have annual crops, corn, soybeans that are gonna be taller than 30 inches. Okay, so here's, and this is something we'll go through a little more in depth, especially just to make sure all the information's there, and maybe try to compare current to this. But this very much is the same as where we're sitting today. It's just reordered to try to flow. So paragraph one would be your conditional use requirements, paragraph two. Oh, sorry. Is it A, B, and C?
Yep.
A, site description. Facility management plan. So these are all part of the conditional use. Waste management plan. Okay, so then two. So one applies to CUPs, to KFOs, two and three would apply to all AFOS. And so everyone follows one, two, and three. Only KFOs with the C, anything needing a CUP follows paragraph one. And so here, much of that same information's in here, site description. A lot of the same information, can't build in a 100-year floodplain. You need a facility management plan. Waste management plan. And then we're into the setback requirements. And here, this is a little bit, these numbers are obviously gonna be discussed heavily. What, what this would be is your, your setback chart, A, B, C, D, E, F, animal unit class. And then I had envisioned solid, semi-solid, and liquid having, having different requirements. I think they're all the same right now.
Scroll back up to the paragraph on this one. And in that paragraph is the allowance for a waiver without the requirement of going through the variance process. So if you have a circle around where you wanna build, and everybody in that circle says thumbs up, good to go, and they all sign off, even though you might be too close to them, you would be good to go.
Yep.
You've met the setback. And in our current ordinance, that's not the case.
Okay, so then regardless of, of your manure management system, then you'd have these setbacks from wells, lakes, rivers, et cetera. I believe that's all the same as what it is today. And then manure application is very similar to what we have today. I think I don't know that there's a lot of changes, but this is something, like I said, we can go through and probably put something that really highlights differences between today and what this reads. But the intent is to try to keep the majority of the material, reorganize it so it's easier to follow. Manure application setback chart. I believe these are increased from what they are today in this chart, and that kinda stems from where we landed on, at planning and zoning level discussions. And then this is just where, this is everything that's in today. It's stricken because it's reorganized. I think that's it. Double check. Okay. And then 520. The getting a permit for the purpose of transferring, that was talked about at planning and zoning. It seemed agreeable that that went to five years. And then obviously, this was more for clarification, but the intent of 520 is, is to truly broker deal. You know, if, if marriage, divorce, death, moving, those types of things happen, then, then you know, that is obviously gonna be an exception. And that should be it, so. Oops. So we didn't get a whole lot of actual information there. But that's the starting point, and I gonna turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, yeah, scroll back to that. So, so really, the, the intent, a big difference in this one is just the change in format. So much of what is shown with an underline that it's brand new is because it was taken from the old ordinance, copied into the new section. Because what we didn't want to happen was to try to to input everything into the old, because that's, that's kinda what we got into with the last changes, is we missed something, and then it's published incorrectly, and it's, it's showing as it was there and it wasn't there, et cetera. So it was just easier to essentially strike everything and copy it into a new format. And again, Joe tried to point out some of those areas where we, as a commission, really need to define the direction. And, and that goes, goes back to, again, acreage sizes, the class sizes, who needs a CUP, who doesn't need a CUP, et cetera. And those are the things I kinda listed at the beginning of the meeting. But what the new format kinda does is it's got three sections. So if I need a CUP, I know exactly what my CUP requires. I have a section that outlines how I'm going to apply my manure. And then I have a section that said, these are my setbacks. So one, two, three. If, if I have 60 sheep, I'm not gonna need a conditional use permit for that. So, but do I, am I big enough to need a manure management plan and a setback? You know, and that goes with where the animal classes end up. So there's probably gonna be something at the bottom, one to 50, one to 100, whatever it is, where there's no control.
So, and that's, you're right. And that's what this is showing here. And again, that's all up for discussion. The class F starts at 50.
So, so the most controversial is gonna be that bottom number, and the difference between class E and F. The rest of them, nobody seems to have an issue with. So we needed, we need to decide.
I have an issue with the rest.
Well, but, and setbacks, setbacks are probably tied to that, though.
All I'm saying is, when you, when you say 10,000 and below versus 10,000 and above, you've eliminated most of modern agricultural culture.
Okay, so we'll add the upper then. So we've got that lower. I guess my point was between 1,000 and 10,000, we haven't had a lot of issue with saying, well, I don't think class C should be that. I think class C should be this. It's always been, what's class E and F, and what's class A? So you've got your lower limit, you've got your upper, the stratification in that middle seems to be kinda, everybody doesn't really have a problem with. So again, that discussion needs to happen. Where, where does that end up? And once you set that, then we look at setbacks for each of those. And what, what is an appropriate setback with how they are today, what changes need to be made, if any? So there's, you know, there's no sense talking about setbacks right now, and then you go and change your class sizes. So, so to me, that's, that's one of the starting points, is that. If that makes sense. And I'm certainly not saying that we're not going to go above 10,000 by my first statement. So at this time, seven o'clock, I said we're gonna be done by nine. I think it'd be wise to take some public comment. If folks wanna come up to the podium, share where your concerns are most, and if you wanna propose a solution, maybe where we wanna end up, things we still need to think about that haven't really kinda been talked about. So if anybody would like to come up to the podium and share your thoughts, you're welcome to do so.
Madam Chair, as small as this group is, I would be fine with just letting people sit down.
The only challenge is the folks at home.
That can hear among them.
Yep. So I know there'll be folks watching this at home, and it is easier when you are at the microphone. And I think most of the people sitting here are not shy about speaking in public. And if you would state your name for Patty.
Zane Williams from Irene, South Dakota. Well, like Don said, too, these 5,000 to 10,000 heads, I know we're not, you said it's hard to talk about it, but I believe it's a two-mile setback.
Right now, Zane, I think you're right.
Right.
Hey, it is, yeah.
And I know for certain parts of the county, it pertains pretty well. But like up in our, our country up there, where I could name you six guys that have no heirs, that are gonna, we're gonna have quite a large chunk of lands could change hands, where a large, large dairy or, or operation could come in and give access to feed our local feeds locally. So I, I do have a problem with that. We had our meeting out at the Archery Center here, and I believe it was October or November, whatever. You guys, some of you that were there, we really appreciate you being there, Family Feeding Families event. But one thing that was pretty resound that I heard, and I think you all did too, is the right to farm. This is all fine. This two-acre push is all fine. And the 40, the 40, 40, whatever, you know, like you were talking, Joe, like they have a Mini-Haha, that's fine. But those, those people have to sign a right to farm covenant. So they will be subject to, you know, as it's, as I had proposed in, in the last P and Z meeting, that there's all kinds of things that are, people are subject to in the agricultural districts. And you know, the setbacks and, and these changes on the class F, I don't agree with them to go to a 50-head. I just feel we should run that, that class F a quarter mile. I, I do feel that, I believe it's 75 foot now. I do believe that is, is too, too major, but I feel.
Quarter miles too long?
No, quarter mile wouldn't be. Right now, it's 75 foot.
What do you think should be the recommended?
I think a quarter mile.
No, 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 no. I'm gonna back up a step. Recommended number of acres.
Oh, you mean for the, for the two, like the two, 20 or whatever?
20.
Oh, that's a wild card.
I mean, is 10 satisfactory? Or is that not enough?
I don't, I don't know. The, what, at our meeting that we had, everybody was, there was still pretty well satisfactory with the 20 acres. Unfortunately, when we, when we lower these, these down to two acres, will we have a huge amount of people coming out and doing it? I don't know. But every time, and, and I'm a livestock, pro livestock. I mean, I've done it on our family farm for 125 years. So my problem is, when you, when you take a, a quarter, and you let, what was it, 40 acres, you could have one house, could you have four per quarter? Is that what was the proposal was, Joe, on the 40?
Well, it would be eight, technically. If you could access the back, the middle ones, that, but it's quarter, every 40 acres, you could have one.
Right. So you could have four on a quarter.
On a quarter, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Eight on a, on a section. But, but here's my problem with that, and, and maybe it'll never come to, you know, in the future. But when you start doing that, and you bookmark our ag districts. Now, we're not talking about residential districts. We're talking ag districts, the leading economic driver in this county. Now, all of a sudden, you've limited any potential for any ag district, like, like a large dairy coming in is about a $25 million investment. And they say it's hard in the roads, it's hard on this. What's the tax base on that? Especially as a township board member, it brings a lot to our townships. Do we have to put up with some grief? Yeah. But would I rather haul my grain to a, to a dairy or, or silage, whatever? Absolutely. Versus hauling it to Hudson where the roads are like this from 150 trucks a day? I mean, it's just, just what I've always believed in. But if we don't, if we don't get this right to farm covenant in, I will fight this two-acre thing to a, to a T forever. I do not believe in it. I still don't believe in it, but I, I, maybe a smaller one down the road, but we have to have the right to farm it. I do, I do agree with some of this language, trying to follow through this, almost made me dizzy. It, luckily Dennis had one, had one of these, and, and it, it, it does help. And these are proposals that you made, Joe, right? A lot of these? Because the ones that, that you guys, the commission voted down was the one that was actually passed at the planning and zoning board. Not by all, but it got passed.
Correct. So what I tried to do is take some of the things that seemed like it was agreeable at that, and leave them in here, and try to try to put something together that's fairly middle of the road, is what I was shooting for. There's definitely things in this that I don't agree with, and there's things in here that I do agree with. So, you know, I don't wanna, I'm not champion, I guess, any one thing in this, in this proposal. It's, it's an attempt at find it some common ground.
And you know that manure management deal that you come up with from Nebraska? I'm not totally against that either, because it does segregate different things. One thing that you did say that I, I didn't catch on the screen, you, you said that the solid manure had to be incorporated within a week. And, and you know, a lot of a small operations, we do apply manure in the winter time, and that's impossible.
I don't know, actually, if that's in here. I, I think that's under a state permit, I believe that's.
Okay.
That's the.
It was just something that you said that caught my ear.
I don't know if I can look here quick, but then here.
I don't remember that being in there, but.
I might have just said that, but it's, that's.
I didn't see the week part, but I saw the, he mentioned the week.
One thing that popped into my mind when you were going through that, Joe, is we identify three kinds of waste, about human waste.
That's also addressed in state septic plan, if you're building. If that's also addressed in the state septic plan, if you build a house, I guess, I don't, I mean, what do you?
Is that they're subject to application requirements?
They spread a lot of it. They drive through town, they drive across roads, they spread a lot of it more than five miles. From the source of.
Are you talking like from in Yankton here?
Mm-hmm. And I also believe that there's restrictions.
Through bioreactors and it's a completely different animal.
Yeah, but.
I don't think so.
But there is restrictions on, on, on that, on that, on that lagoon or from the, from the wastewater plants. You can't grow any crops to eat, I think, for five years. Cause of the heavy metals, unfortunately.
Yeah, there's potential for heavy metals.
Yeah, from drugs and, you know, just, I, I don't know. I, I just remember reading that someplace.
We can, we can have them come in and give us the demonstration.
Question, then, are you a proponent of keeping it at twenty acres?
It's a completely different animal.
And can continue to do variances? I know that you're not perfectly happy with that. Is, is that a compromise? Would you rather have that than two acres or kind of like?
You know.
At least you know what's going in the neighborhood then, i- if it's a variant.
The, 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 the thing about, you're, you're right, you do. And, and I know I've heard the comment that most of the variants have been made to farmers and, and they probably have. But what I, wh- when you get out in, in the ag district. Nobody has a problem if, if, if Joe Blowgo gets a two acre variance to build a new house on his farm. But when a two acre new acreage comes in and they plant flowers right alongside your field. And, and they scream and yell because of, of dust and noise, that's the problems that, that, that get created. You know, it's. That's just, it's a tough road to hold. I, I don't know. What, what, what I hear from, from the people in the ag country, and that's all I can go by. Is that they want the right to farm and they, they, they don't want this twenty acre change. And like I think I mentioned before, the ag district is not asking for these changes. We are being encroached on by people that want to come to ours. But remember, I just started, this is another, it's a little bit of a story, but I started doing business, the new dairy that just moved from, from California. And you know what they left there? Politics and religion. And they said, you have a special thing in South Dakota, protected. And that's what I feel we're doing and we need to do. So I mean, that's, that's just the way I feel about it. But, and they're a five thousand head dairy and they got a half mile setback. And there're five hundred thousand dollar homes within a half mile of that brand new dairy that's getting built. And it's fine, but they also have the right to farm there in many homes. They love it here. Absolutely love it. I guess that's all I.
I'm Dennis Michael. I live out by Utica, Yankton is my address. Been involved in this thing since beginning. When actually when the reasons zoning got started was because the feedlot was supposed to be built across from me and that's basically what started it all. I echo a lot of things that Zane said. When we get into the animal classification thing, that's a tough one. Because when we get down to the Class F that you have, as you have it shown on, on your thing here. That's still, my concern is you're into these little areas that we've ran into and not too far from our neighborhood where you, the hobby farms. The people that aren't actively involved for a living in livestock, but they don't do a very good job taking care of things. They don't have the facilities or the land base to properly dispose of the manure and things like that. And they really create an eyesore around the area, but yet they oppose anybody that builds a new building and tries to do it right. I, I'm not sure where we go with that. The Class F, I think. If you keep it. There's gonna be a lot of discussion on it. Where, where the people need to be at it. One thing that was mentioned, and we all know what it comes down to that, is it's gonna come to a vote. At some point, it'll be a, a vote. And. The problem with that is there is four of us, five of us sitting in this room that are livestock production people. And we don't count up against the city Yankton voting on what's gonna happen. So we're gonna have it handed to us as this is what it's gonna be. And I agree a hundred percent with Zane's comment about, and you get to an agricultural district, you need to have the right to farm. Rule in there that in that ag district, it has to be there so that even though you, if you take it down to two acres, one acre, fifty acres, whatever. That agriculture can still continue in that ag district without, you know, without. Being crippled by residents moving out there. One thing I did, and maybe I read it wrong, I thought I was reading it right, but then some of the new things here. Joe, when you were doing it, when we were talking about the houses being built. Out in the ag district and things like that. To me, what I was reading in that was actually a reverse setback to those, if you wanted to build a house out in that area. That you had to have the covenant, you had to, you know, basically come before, meet all those requirements. And I think that's what we've talked about several times is. If we're gonna get pushed into, you know, or it's gonna come down to a two acre minimum. Then the only way we'll support, you know, we'll accept it basically is to have that protection. That I've been on my place, my parents moved there in nineteen fifty-one and we've been fought to kept it ever since. And so the last thing I want is somebody to build a house next to me and start complaining about what I've been doing for fifty years. Every farmer's, you know, everybody's different, raised a lot of, you know, hogs. Now I'm in a cattle business. Joe, on your manure management plan. And I, we've talked about this before when we're on the zoning board and stuff like that. I don't have a problem with that. I like, I know that some of the, actually the state kind of does it now. I talked to one other guy, one of the guys that I feed cattle for, and he said that that's how their operation set up because they had. Slatted confinement for cattle. They have dry lots. They had hog barns with pits under them and stuff like that. So under their state permit, it was set up for different things that they, how they use that, utilize that. And I don't imagine it's as much of a nightmare as it looks like it is.
Right, right.
But I kind of wondered who was gonna police that as far as how it gets done, to make sure it's compliant. And then my other fear was, and my memory is really short, but is it two thousand nineteen, eighteen when we had the bomb cyclone and all this stuff? All of manure was liquid manure. It didn't really matter. And, you know, the manager, like in our, my feedlot, even though we've got lagoons on the end to catch the manure. Most of the lot ended up down in the lagoon because you couldn't hold it. It was turned to mud and.
Right.
You know, luckily you kept the lagoon from breaching, but, so it's, it becomes a, a lot of issue, a lot of things like that. One other question that I've had. For quite a while is. When we start talking about setbacks and where you talk about, even on the Class F, move it to just a quarter mile. You know, and then you get to the half mile setbacks and it has to be from, you know, the right of ways and, and, you know, change of ownership, property lines and stuff like that. When we get down to a specific foot number, twenty-six hundred and forty or three hundred and twenty-seven or whatever the number is. At some point, somebody's gonna contest that number because you're three hundred and twenty-eight feet, you're not three hundred and twenty-seven feet. And I don't know how you. How you balance that, you know, because, and there's a lot of places when you get past Class C basically. The setbacks that we have today are pretty hard to find a place you can build that a half mile from the road, puts you on your. Section or on your property line at the middle to your adjoining neighbors. So if you don't own the section next to you, you can't actually build there. And if you do, if somebody hotly contests what you're doing. You're gonna be less than a half mile from the property line on the other side of the section, even if you own it all.
Now, the, the, sorry to interrupt, the, the. I don't think those setbacks from right of way change though with class size, do they?
No.
Okay, yeah.
I, I don't know. I just, but what I'm, that's an issue is you're, as we're going along in. Making adjustments and change to this, that I think that some things kind of have to be addressed that, that have been written that we've abided by. Is because of the, the wishes of some people to sue you because of whatever reason. That they will find any little thing that they can to put a stop on it. I don't know how we, how you fix that. I've never, I haven't talked to any of the other counties or any place in the state where they do that. Then the other issue, you know, and it's still kind of with the setback thing is the manure application setbacks. There's a three acre piece of land across the road from me that I rent from a neighbor to put hay up on and it should be nice to haul manure on that. But it's five feet from the highway or from the county gravel, or fifteen feet, thirty-three feet, whatever the, the right of way is. And it's about fifty feet from the guy that lives there. And it's to a hundred feet maybe from the creek that goes alongside of it, you know, so other than, you know. Other than commercial fertilizer, you really legally can't haul nothing there.
Right.
And there are several little patches of that around the county that, you know. Just because of the way that it's topography of where they lay and things like that, what happens. I guess, you know, going along a lot with what. Zane was saying. I think the, the biggest thing we, for protection of the ag districts, like he said, is the right to farm covenant, the waivers. You know, you put the waivers on it and stuff like that. The waiver goes with the land, not with the landowner. Once you come in and get that waiver, if you go, that if something happens to you and that property gets sold, that person has to know that when they're buying that. That you're buying that waiver along with it. There doesn't, is it changes hands? And I, you know, the reverse setback thing is a must. Because there's a lot of facilities and I know some of the guys that are in here have talked about this, you know, in a group before. Is that when your kids come back or when you want to expand your operation to accommodate your children coming into the farm. You, you have, you want to look at, maybe expanding or doing something like that and, and to be hindered. By that in an ag district because of somebody building a house next to you. There's a lot of thing, you know. The nuts and bolts of this whole thing, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the organization and getting it to flow. And I think that's been a problem, you know, for a long time is, you know, like the definition of agriculture that we, you know, struck through out of this thing. I think that the page should have been named agriculture, but then that should have went, broke it down into what it was. Because, you know, there's really no rule in this whole thing for anybody that plows dirt. You know, that plants corn, that plants soybeans, you know, and that, you know, the trucks that are on the roads or the grain trucks. And there's nothing in here against them. It's all those guys that fight the livestock. So, thank you.
Can I, Dennis, before you sit down, I want to just touch the class systems. I'll go through the manure in just a second, just a quick overview, but. The F. And we've had this discussion. I know in the past, going down to the fifty or whatever. And, and I know you've brought that up before where there's, you know, some, a hobby farm can be more of a nuisance than, than the guy with. A hundred cattle or five hundred cattle or a thousand cattle. And I agree with that. And I think that's why F went down to one. My, my thought on it is. The CUP requirement or some of the regulations to me would, would be environmental. Or, you know, environmental concerns would dictate, okay, this, this size should have a regulation or whatever. As far as the nuisance goes, to me, our nuisance ordinance should encompass that. Should.
It should, yeah.
But. And that, that, that's my, I guess, logic or reason why we wouldn't have, you know, regulation all the way down.
Well, and, you know, going with what our little snicker was about, it was the fact that it's only illegal if you get caught. So if you're cleaning up after your dogs and you're dumping it in the road ditch, that's an environmental, that's illegal too. I mean, that's been where the nuisance lawsuit thing comes in and, or if you're, if you're. You know, I see it happen a lot of, in a lot of areas, in a subject unrelated to livestock production of the guys cutting their trees and their pastures. They're, they're cutting seeders out and not taking care of them the way they should. And when the wind comes, they all end up in a road ditch. And then that's where they lay. Well, the county ordinance says, you know, not, the road. Rules are, the ditch is, is not a place where you dump your rocks out of your field and you don't, you know, dump your trees and your rubbish. That you don't want to keep, although several people seem to think that she put a dump in the road ditch and just haul into the dump. But, but that's, you know, that's an issue that has to be addressed in another, you know, medium. But when you get into the livestock numbers, you know. I, I don't know that Class F, and it's, we, you know, when Dan, we had this long discussion about changing it. From animal units to actual animals. And I can go along with that to a point as far as when you get down to the hobby farm and, and that lower classification thing. It's where you need to set some kind of a limit on what they can do because, you know, if, if you're Class F with no, no rules and you have. Four, you know, well, four hundred animal, you know, it should be eight hundred head of hogs running around on your, on the dirt lots outside. You've got a mess out there too. If it's not, you know, like you say, environmental rules and something like that has to be changed. But, so I, I don't know, I don't know the livestock numbers, what the answer to that is. Cause, cause we talked about if you went down to just animals versus animal units, who's gonna police that?
Well, that's just it. I don't see us going out and counting chickens and rabbits and.
But, but I, I don't, you know, there's a million questions and probably two million answers, you know, depending who you ask. So, but I think that, I think I'm, I'm okay with the format that you've got laid out here to bring it, you know, clean the thing up a little bit. You know, and, and to get it more, but, you know, if you say have it in a flow, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of what the purpose of the ag district is. We allow ag to continue. I mean, that, and, you know, back when we started, when I started on this thing. We were told right away that when there was a change being made, you had to change the comprehensive plan before you went to the ordinance. And I'm, I'm kind of anxious to see where that comes. And I agree with what Sharon said about the numbers in that comprehensive plan book. Boggles your mind and the graphs and this and the that, you know, and believe me, there were a lot of meetings in the building of this ordinance originally. To midnight or later, trying to get through all those numbers. We even had the newspaper guy snoring in the back. But that needs to be really addressed because the county has really changed. You know, and it's a little bit hard to go to other counties' comprehensive plans, other than to look at it as an overview. Because way back when this all started, we had such a diverse county to start with, with the lake area. East Yankton, what, you know, the residential stuff that was getting started clear out, you know, by the county line already and, you know, and then you go north. And now on Highway eighty-one corridor, you know, and they're, you know, commercial stuff. But then you got people that live there and people that raise livestock along that too. And it, it's a, it's gonna be quite a challenge, I think. I'll take it under your cap. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. So to kind of touch base on what Dennis talked about, the, the manure system and how it'd be handled. And it's something, I think there's probably gonna be a learning curve. I talked to several. I don't know, planning and zoning and state people in Nebraska. So this is what they use. So really long short, like a dry feedlot would be your solid, solid and liquid is easy. You know, it's the semi-solid and. If you had, if you had a facility that where you had dry lot beef and maybe a nursery barn or finishing swine or something. You would just be lumped into the semi-solid. So you, you'd either be dry, liquid, and if you don't fit one of those two, then you'd be that semi-solid.
And, and I guess, I, I understand exactly how this, this part here works, Joe, but what I was concerned about is say my, my lots to the south are dry lots.
Okay.
But they're built to a lagoon to catch runoff.
That'd be a dry lot.
Out of that, but then once you have to clean that lagoon, then what do you, how do you, how do you? Cause I had a guy come in and, and with a big excavator and they. To let it dry, but it's, it's way past the semi-solid thing.
I see what you're saying.
You know, so that becomes a, an issue that it has to be handled because you're losing your lagoon capacity.
Right.
To hold water in a big event, but it becomes a different class. To hold water in a big event, but it becomes a different classification across the fence from where your dry lot is.
I see what you're saying, I I I think you, I think you still, you wouldn't change the class, you would still remain a solid system, that's just part of the maintenance with that. And, you know, nothing would be, nothing would change.
Part of being really specific though is we've all seen how everybody agreed on something twenty years ago and now everybody thinks it means something else. And we're all not going to be here. And so when you got a complex system like that, you better make sure it's
Well, and it
people know where you're at. And you know, it's something to consider too, is I talked to, you guys know I work with the James River Water, but I also work with South Central Implementation Program. And twelve are ten out of our twelve new cattle operations are all liquid manure, deep pit. There's very few lagoon system going in or bedding systems or dry feed lots just because your feed efficiency isn't there. So I I understand why you're going to liquid manure system, but that's the way the beef industry is going now, right now it's happening. And for simplicity sake, is it not better to just, you know, have one setback for manure, I mean, what happens when somebody changes their system? Who's going to police this? I mean, I
Well, you don't just up and change your system.
Well, but but you get the the biggest thing with all of it, no matter what, if you're doing this, any one of those three systems you have listed listed up there. And depending upon the size, if you're already permitted through the state, you know, it says right in the rulebook, no spreading of of manure on frozen ground. You know, and and most of us, that's the only time you can get in the field. You know, you can actually go out there, but I think the the common sense part of that whole deal is is not on ground that runs off to a creek, you know, that, you know, on your on
If it's flat ground or hilly ground, yeah.
You know, and like this year, actually, there was not much frost in the ground. So you can, in some areas, you can still, you know, you know, incorporate or like inject liquid, I don't know about that yet, but but uh some of the other stuff can be, if it's a, you know, a bedding based thing where you're basically getting rid of corn stocks or straw or something like that, you know, like we did forty years ago when you cleaned hog barn on Saturday. It wasn't a big deal. But when you're pumping liquid manure out, then it becomes a real big deal because it kind of flows.
Yep. Thank you, Dennis.
Jay Cutts, Mission Hill. Just as I was sitting here looking at this, the semi-solid thing, uh if you go look at a lot of the dairies as they go clean their pens and stuff, they're all sucking up that, you know, really heavy stuff and then setting it out over here to to dry. And I'm guessing that's probably where they come up with the semi-solid, you know, issue as far as the solid or or liquid. While we're looking at this, I'd just like to say, I think if you if you keep the intent of the ag ordinance, because that's that's what it starts with, is the intent of the ag ordinance and in that in it and in that, it says to protect agricultural lands and lands consisting of natural growth from incompatible land uses and to limit residential, commercial, industrial development to those areas best suited. If we keep that in mind as we're rewriting this, I know there's different people that say agriculture is getting too big or whatever, but that's something, again, we can't change, it's modern agriculture. And it's not something we're going to go backwards, I mean, and Zane mentioned that also, and that scares the living daylights out of me, what Zane said about up in that area, if four or five of his guys sold out, there'd be a big enough area out there that if somebody large wanted to come in and buy up all that land and put a five thousand cow dairy in there, that's not what I would like to see in Yankton County. I'd rather see smaller livestock units scattered all over Yankton County where we can bring some young people back in from farming families instead of of five thousand cow dairy or ten thousand cow dairy. We're gonna, if we put too many restrictions on this, we're gonna have that issue where a bunch of of some large landowner is going to come in and say, I'm going to come in and buy up enough land so I can put what I need right here and not have it scattered around the rest of the county, which I think would be a detriment to Yankton County. Um I don't, I don't think that'd be good for it, I'd much rather see uh smaller, say, thousand head or two thousand head feed lots scattered all over Yankton County. But you start doing that and then you got into the economics of the thing, and that's why they're going to uh deep pit cattle barns is more of the economics and trying to uh contain all the liquid that runs off an open lot. Gets really, really expensive, so that's why they're going to the to the to the cattle feed lots the same way with that they have the pigs. Other than the intent of the ag district, if we can keep that, um the right to farm covenants need to be on anything that gets sold in Yankton County out in that ag district, I feel. Um we're getting too much of this where um just because I have a piece of ground out there, I think I can put a garden uh right next to my farmer's field. And then if he happens to have a little bit of overspare or something and ruins my garden, it's his fault. Well, no, the people that live out in an ag district should have a setback also from the property line for their uh gardens and and in other buildings and and uh and that's one of the reasons why the seventy-five foot setback uh off a property line is is very important. I'm not for a two acre lot size. I still think uh for me, when we started doing this zoning of these guys, I argued for eighty acres. Because if somebody wanted to build a house out in a piece of ag land, I felt that they should have a little skin in the game and know what it is to own farm ground. And it would give them a lot more different perspective on what it takes to uh to uh farm that ground. I'd really, I'd still like to say, see it stay at twenty acres. For one reason, a lot of it is if you stick a house in the middle of a lot and then I need an, and I did it outbuilding and then I need a well and then I need a septic system. Two acres doesn't get to be enough area for, it it would help if it's a new place they're doing it, but like in a lot of these old lots and all the old farm studs and stuff like that, where there's already trees covering half of it, uh it's not enough area to put up anything properly. So then again, we're coming back for variances and stuff like that and uh and I'm with you, uh we we have handed out too many variances for those lots. People out in the ag district aren't foolish. Um if they come in and say, you know, just mark it off what you want, we'll just give you a variance instead of, no, you have to have twenty acres. So they're going to lot it off to whatever they want, come in for a five acre lot and they're not gonna, you know, I mean, that's just the way it was. Uh they just offered too many variances for them. Um one other thing, um that manure management that you had there, I saw that uh um on the flood plain, uh no manure could be hauled out there. About thirty-five percent of my farm is flood plain. Now, um it seems rather foolish that I could put whatever kind of commercial fertilizer I wanted out there. But I couldn't uh put on my organic animal waste. Just, and I understand why it's probably put in there. Uh I don't want to put it on something that's going to get uh flooded every year either. But there are some areas out in the county that uh that are flood plains but aren't really flood plains because of the Missouri River and the Jim River and and last couple of times the Jim River out where they went out foolishly, but that's the way that goes. So I'd I'd ask for that to be taken out of there.
Do you remember where that is? I can't, I didn't see it when I scanned it.
Where is it? Yeah, it's in the
It's totally prohibited.
Yep, right there, the hundred year flood plain is prohibited. Well, like I said, I've got about thirty percent of my our land is in in a hundred year flood plain just because it's of the Jim River and the Missouri River.
You're looking at that table?
Yes.
So scroll up, the the table is not on manure application.
For your facility.
So scroll up to the to the title of the table. That's for facility setback charts.
Oh, okay.
So you can't, you can't
I thought it was a manure facility. I thought it was in the manure management.
Nope, it's not manure.
Yeah, that this, this table, this should be reformatted, that that's all on one page.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Facility.
Yeah, there's there's no limitation for for the manure on that.
Okay.
So.
All right, that's it.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Jay.
Should mention to anyone at home, these has been and is online for review, so.
Louis Johnson, Volin. Uh I have to agree with pretty much everybody that's spoken so far as far as the right to farm. The two acre lot thing, don't we have planned unit developments of various sizes like high density, medium density and low density now? So why do we need to shotgun two acre lots throughout the county? When there's areas set up for two acres? Or do people want to buy two acres and then assume ownership or control over an AD recorder? I guess that's the way I see it, wow, geez, if I buy two acres, I can make sure that nobody can do anything around me without me being a pain in the butt. Your numbers on livestock, the zero to fifty head, I kind of see that in my mind like, well, I don't mind a teaspoon of manure in my glass of drinking water, I just don't want a tablespoon of it in there. And I can show you hobby farmers that this fall spread manure in the road ditch. I don't care, the grass will be better there next year. But you know, there's manure in the road ditch, that's fine, I can show you another hobby farm where he pushes his manure into the wetlands. And he had to move it twice because a year ago the water table was so high, he couldn't get it out as far. And then he went back and moved it up to where the edge of the water was this year. But apparently that's okay. I, and near as I can tell, he just lets it rot away and run into the wetland. Because I've never seen a manure spreader on the place since he's owned it. We, on the other hand, test our manure. We apply it to the soil needs because we test the soil along with the manure and it is applied to get maximum return out of it. And I definitely have to agree it's the livestock industry is definitely being picked on. I know guys that, you know, they probably haul five hundred semi-loads of grain to town a year, they haul them home, put them in the bins and then they haul them to town, maybe two hundred. I don't see anybody saying, oh, you need a road haul agreement. I've got a feed truck that comes to the place once a week, ruining the roads, you got to have a feed truck. I maintain the roads passed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight fog buildings or nine. I don't know if any township that sat there and had to pick up the bills because the owners of the buildings spent between three and ten thousand dollars to redo the roads. And I can remember the picture, the trucks stuck up there, the feed trucks up there off the wall sound. You drive on that road today and that is as hard as a rock and that was before it froze. But there was ballast hauled in there, work done on the road and everything else, but why is it just the livestock farmers have to put up with that? You have a road haul agreement with FedEx there on the east side of town, they got trucks going all the time. In Northern Mission Hill Township, there was a FedEx or UPS truck that got stuck on the township road. There's a housing development out west of Cottonwood Corral that stopped the FedEx and UPS trucks from driving the roads because they were ruining them two years ago in the spring. Everything that got delivered got set off at the first person's house. And I mean, that's a private road, so that was fine, I don't care, but I just don't understand why it is, and the other thing about the two acres it gets me is, okay, I neighbor across the road is mad at me, so he sells a two acre lot right across the road from my house. Okay, fine, if that's legal, it's legal. And he makes sure that the guy brings in a three thousand dollar trailer house. Seven four-wheelers and his, you know, extended family. And pretty soon we've got all kinds of activity tearing up and down the road. Would you like that across from your place? Uh as far as I know, when I put up my AFO, not a KFO, because it was only two hundred and forty animal units, seventy-five foot setback. I am a short two hundred feet from my house. The next closest person is over a quarter of a mile away. I got sued by thirty-three people, the closest one lived two and a quarter miles away. And near as I can tell, it was everybody that's tried to put up a confinement building has been in court for whatever reason. And I guess, and I've been called names in publications and letters to the editor. And I guess if if feeding the people is a bad thing, maybe we should start building factories because I just read a great article how they could take some kind of vegetable in a three D printer and print out the prettiest roast you've ever seen. So the next obvious step would be just take that same three D printer and print out the vegetables too, and then we wouldn't need farmers at all. I've watched articles by the tree, the the animal rights people where you shouldn't torture a cow, you should take her to the beach with you and make prints. Obviously, these people have never swam in the stock dam where there were cows. Where they find out that cows aren't the tidyest animals in the world. I just do not see why, and the fact that if you have one bad person across the road and you decide to get old and retire or drop dead and they want to sell the place and you have a buyer, well, geez, I can make that work. I can put a barn up there. Oh, this guy doesn't like it, suddenly that makes up my place worth a thousand dollars, an acre less. And it, if you check out a lot of these auctioneer sites, you'll find out that livestock doesn't seem to hurt the land values. Actually, it helps them a lot. And the one thing that it does more than anything is the fact that it brings in the next generation. Because to start a kid out and farming, it's going to take a couple of million bucks to get him up and running to where he can make a living and you can get by for about half of that with livestock. And I watched my grandson last night, I was over there and watched the kids while my son and daughter-in-law were doing something, when they came back, they had to go out and bottle feed the lambs and the five-year-old went along with my son. And on the way back, they're having this conversation. And my son goes, well, when you turn six, I think you can handle it. My son goes, my grandson, excuse me, goes, well, will you still be around in case I have a problem? My son goes, well, I sure hope so. That's the next generation. Without that, there is no future. And I can't see why we have to make it so impossible to have livestock and do what farmers do. And why everything on what I read there in an ag district is okay, except concentrated livestock feeding. What other business in the county gets micromanaged like that? And according to the EPA, one of the local manufacturing places is the biggest polluter in the county. But we don't talk about that because they employ people. Well, we employ people too, and we live here. I don't want to ruin the water. I don't want to ruin the air. I want to have it so my grandkids can come over and. Visit me. Or help. Because it's so nice to see. Young people that everything is possible. Instead of waiting until you get old and, oh, this won't work, that won't work, I'm offended, so you can't do it. I'm sorry. Uh, I don't think micromanaging livestock production ag is the answer for the county. And I guess the way I see it. If they want to support me, I'll support the county. If they don't want to, there's basically nothing in this county that I can't get someplace else.
Thank you.
Chris Sparkle of Yankton. Um, I think that we need to start by looking at what the zoning districts were primarily set up to do. Which is to protect the primary activity in that district. And just like the comprehensive plan states is to promote the separation of economic activities and conflicting land uses. The current problems we have with Article Five and ag zone districts aren't coming from ag producers. They're coming from incompatible residences moving out into an ag zone district. And. Basically, like Louis said, micromanaging the farmers and the producers with plans like you have here up on the screen. That's not going to reduce any conflicts. That's only going to increase the conflict that we have out in the ag zone district. Because you're going to promote more residences out there that which are incompatible. Uh, if you looked at basically any of the other districts that we have in our zoning ordinances. Uh, you basically, you can't have anything, animal agriculture at all in any of those other districts. It's not even consideration. And because it's incompatible. And why is agriculture supposed to put up with incompatible uses in the ag zone district? And as far as residences go, the only place that they're permitted, other than a residentially zoned district is in the ag zone. There's no. Permitted use for a residence in a commercially zoned district or a lakeside commercial district. Or any of these other places, but in an ag zone district, for some reason, that's supposed to be okay. When you go through the planning considerations and the comprehensive plan that we have now, it's to, there's many points that. Point to promoting agriculture, like avoiding declining ag production. Uh, capacity and building value-added facilities in ways that minimize land use. Presenting a positive attitude toward development and discouraging products that, projects that take prime farmland out of production. Recognizing that ag is a primary economic activity subject to increasing pressure for development. And the list goes on. But for some reason. The bar has been moved so that we can go from what we currently have to something more restrictive on ag producers like you've got here. And I don't think that's right. I think that we need to start over completely, which I've been doing. I have a proposal of my own that I'm working on. And I think that it would accommodate ag producers much more favorably than the current plan that you have laid out here. Which basically does nothing to give to ag producers, but only takes away from them. And gives to an incompatible use in the ag zone district.
Simon Haley, Irene. Um, I can't agree with anything, disagree with anything that anybody had said this evening. I mean, they hit everything. Right on the head. Um, there's nothing more really to say about it, but. When you think about how ag is in our community and how it is around our community. People kind of laugh at us in Yankton County as far as how we're being hogtied to what we can't do, for what we want to do and expand. Tri-Cross Dairy in Turner County, talked to the manager of that, and he basically just laughed and said, you know, Yankton wasn't even on the radar. Just for how things are. Limited, you know, for that kind of production to come in. And then, you know, in Sioux County, I mean, it's, people just get along. When ag is allowed to expand and prosper. Um, your family gets to come home and help. Your, your parents are allowed to retire and, and relax. Because they know that the next generation is taken care of and that next generation is taken care of. Instead of people moving away. I mean, um, you know, Zane, I mean, I'm sure Alicia and Andy, I mean, if it was easier for them. They might not be living in Sioux Falls and make that their career. I mean, Alicia grew up on the farm. I bet she'd love to come back. But for her to do that, I mean, for me, variances is what's going to keep Yankton going. I mean, you cannot get rid of variances because that's what keeps, you know, my son maybe wanting to farm. I have to build a house north of my place just for him because he can't afford the twenty acres. Which I do agree that twenty acres kind of are a must to keep people. And I don't want to say that don't belong out there, but. You, I think you guys know what I mean, you know, the ones that are going to go out there and be a nuisance, you know, but you know, you just have to find that. That common ground with people who have been out there their entire life. That need variances for smaller acres to keep their livelihood going. And the ones that are going to take advantage of that, as like Louis said, to shut down that neighbor across the road that they don't get along with. Or things like that. I mean, it's, I know this is no easy task, but. It needs to start changing to more farmer friendly. I mean, it needs to. Not put so many restrictions on things that no need to be restricted, that are going to end up shoving people away because they're not going to want to. Do all this extra stuff that isn't really needed because it, you know, it's been working fine, you know, all these years and, you know, and. And we had this last meeting, my dad never got the question asked, but what's the need for all these changes? I haven't visited with one farmer or one bull customer of ours that has a problem with their farming neighbor. There's never been a problem. You know, the, the farmer that has cattle over there, he comes over and asks for advice. Or the colony comes over and asks for advice. I mean, you just, you just get along farming, farmers get along. Seems like all this stuff here that's being proposed is for the people that want to come out and enjoy the life that we have made for ourselves. That they can't have, so to say, so they want it changed so they can come out and then basically put an end to somebody's career. I mean, the Heelys have a silo by Mayfield Church. This is what nineteen oh three, six, nineteen oh something. I mean, think of the years of people that have been by that, you know, and it's, it keeps going. And I don't intend to stand with you, Joe, to keep that name going in that area. But if things going to start changing. You know, if the livestock is going to be looked after really hard, I mean, it's just a matter of time before. You people are, you know, gone, you know, down the road and it turns to the people who turn dirt. You know, then it's going to start going to the chemical fertilizer and how that needs to be, you know, changed. And I mean, it's, it's livestock and, or ag in general is just going to be. Attacked. And I just think you guys need to feel the need to change that and not be the, the county and the state. That everybody says, oh, Yankton County, you know, that, that's, you know, they just pretty much say with a smile or a snicker on their face. Because it's just not the friendliest place to expand or want to farm. And then the, that right to farm thing that they said to put their rider or whatever. I don't know if you can answer it or when you guys discuss it, is that something that is able to withhold with. I would say withhold in court if you guys were to put that on a piece of ground. And that was the ordinance. Is that something that somebody could get around eventually or someday? And act, you know, like it's just a piece of paper, that it doesn't mean anything, you know, as far as having it have teeth. And, you know, you sign this, that's how it is and you can't do nothing. I mean, that's, that's kind of how I see it has to be. Because if you just make it a formality, eventually it's, people are just going to, you know, not. Look at it as a, not a threat, but as something that they need to abide by and understand when they go out there, you know. And I don't know if you can or want to or what, but I just, you know.
And that's been Mike since Eric, if you're ready.
Is your microphone on?
It would need to be filed.
Of record.
Of record, but I would think once that's done.
It, it's like a perpetual easement. If I give BYwater an easement across my land. It runs with the land. It goes forever.
Yeah.
But if.
I think the question is, if, if I'm going to build a house. And I sign a right to farm clause. Then I can never sue my neighbor for anything. Would that ever hold up?
Well, you can always sue somebody for something, but I don't think we can use the word never. You know, I thought, but if I sell, if I have eighty acres and I sell Don a three acre parcel. And he gets some variance to build. A wigwam or whatever he wants to build on it. And, but I say, you know, you have to. I'm putting this on my land and you have to take my land as you get it, which is that thing that says you can't complain to me.
Right.
Or you can't complain to the next guy that buys it after me or my son or my grandson or whomever. And that runs with the land. You can tie up land forever.
But that would be something you as a selling landowner would put on, not the county.
You know, I think, I, I think even if the county would put it on, it's not a jail, get out of jail free card.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, as if.
Well, that, that's what I said, even if the county has that in our ordinance, it's not a get out of jail free card. It's not, I can do whatever I want to and I can spray with a fifty mile an hour wind.
Yeah, I know.
But I guess that's my point. So there's, there's a fine line there with the protections that it allows. I think what your guys, you guys are requesting is that it's in here as an, as a. I hate to use the word an alert, but just so folks understand, and, and I've even talked to Joe about, well, if we do it for a right to farm. If, if I build in another area in the county, do I need to sign and say, well, I understand there's a nuisance ordinance out there. I understand that, you know, I shouldn't be doing my ATBs at two in the morning down the street. And we get all kinds of calls with people complaining about that type of stuff in the, in the areas they live too. Um, so that's my only caution is, you know, probably does carry some weight in court.
Yeah.
But it's not going to save you.
I mean, it goes both ways. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, know somebody signing that, you know, and I'm not going to go take my manure spreader and things, you know, along the fence. I mean, the guy, you know, it goes both ways, but I mean, it has to be somewhat of a deterrent to the, the troublemakers that want to build out there. Just so maybe they could stop the neighbor's hog farm or, or this guy's livestock building from going up, you know, and I don't know if you could.
But that could be one of the, the things a twenty acre lot size would do. Is somebody who's going to put a three thousand dollar trailer on a piece of land is probably not going to pony up for twenty acres.
And then.
And if I sell you my twenty acres, I'm going to make you, I'm going to file something that says this is farmable. And here, sign this, you can't complain to me because I have two pigs and a goat next year.
Yeah. Yeah, then, then what if, you know, like let's say you, you sell your eighty, your two acres or whatever to somebody. And, and you're not liking agriculture where you're at. So then you get somebody else in there for that two acre, then they're on your bandwagon. So now there's two people in that. Area that are against, you know, that, I mean, I, that's just, you know, I could see where you're coming from, but I don't want it to come to where. Somebody can sell their lots like that unhinged and just on what they want the rider to be as far as, you know, but then they do that. And then, then you're getting a swarm of people, you know, anti, you know.
Well, there lies the problem. If I have two acres, what basically that's saying is if I have two acres, I control your other seventy-eight acres.
Yeah.
And that's not right.
No, no, I, I agree. I mean, that's how it needs to be because if they come out there, they should be well aware of their building out there. And you're in the ag district and I don't know if that's, that can be put in there with teeth and that, that's it, you know. And you're not coming out there to be, you know, have the nice city life out here and not want the smells and stuff. And try to entroach on somebody who's been there for a hundred years and that, that just can't work, you know, that's, that's not feasible for everybody who lives out there and stuff like that. It's the same way with, you know, um, cutting silage and, you know, and grain farmers, you know, we take mud on the road or whatnot. And some people pull it back in and some don't, you know, but I mean, that's just how farming has to cohabitat and get along. But I mean, as far as the people that want to move out there, they just need to understand. You know, what is going to be out there and what they can't do when they get out there or if they have to be built so far away is because. KFO has to be built so far away from them. They should be built that far away. And if it's not going to work for them to build out there, well, then they can't build, you know. If they're not far enough away from this guy's hog barn, this guy's feedlot, well, then there's not a spot for them to build there.
I think the biggest thing with your, with what Zane's talking about would be the, it would be a notice to anybody purchasing acreage out there. That there's, there's a restriction and then you just need to be careful how you, where you put it in the ordinance. And what, when it's required, for example, I mean, you, I don't know, I didn't read all of Zane's. But, you know, it, it could be possible where a building permit can't be issued until that's signed and, and filed and all of that. I mean, it's just, it, it's just making sure that the process is correct.
And I think that's how some of the other counties do it. It used to be listed in our ordinance under section seventeen thirty-three. Which now says reserved for future use.
Right.
But it was taken out. So the language used, there used to be some language in here.
And so I know, I know the, I mean, I've heard loud and clear that the right to farm clause is, is important. And has been brought up over and over and over in. But one thing I haven't been able to wrap my head around, I guess, is in. I'm understanding that it's requested as kind of a protection, correct? And I, I see it as no more than a notification. Because no matter what it says, and if the process is followed, it doesn't stop anything. And look at the Schmichaels in Turner County right now, and their very first line of defense was this person signed a right to wait, right to farm clause. Waving these rights and the judge said, who cares? And that's what, so I just want people to understand it.
Wasn't that the second one?
It, yeah, and it, it, it's a notification and it's maybe an awareness that, hey, you're building in an ag district. But it, it stops there. There's no real protection.
Can you make it more than that? I mean, if they, I mean, no different than like a building, if they sign that, they agree that it has to be this size. And if they go beyond that size, aren't they, you know, have to pay a fine or something, you know, I mean, because if they sign a piece of paper document, you think that should be, you know.
Don, Don, when you and I were at the state convention, didn't they have, didn't the attorney talk about this? Were you in that class with me?
I don't think so.
And Sheri was, and they actually mentioned this at the state association and the attorney wouldn't give a lot of guidance. But he just said, you, the counties are considering, you have to be very careful. About not letting, if you don't let somebody complain. to be very careful about not letting, if you don't let somebody complain, well, then that could be affecting their rights, so.
It's a touchy subject and I, I don't have a lot of answers.
Well, that was the boss, it was Joe's issue, they didn't keep it from playing.
Well, exactly, exactly, yeah.
I still think it'd be a great deterrent for the average, average person. I mean, if I was just gonna be able to buy a big house and build a three hundred thousand dollar house, that was in the back of my mind.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I talked with Brian Donahue, a great length about it, he sure thinks it holds water. But the county has spent, I think, as we talked last year, almost two hundred thousand dollars in lawsuit charge for deductible, right, the last year, year and a half?
No.
If, if all of.
Not for deductibles.
If we talked, if every, if everyone would go to court and go through, then it could be that much, yes. No, we have not spent that much, but yeah, yeah.
I wonder what that figure actually is, because I've had a lot of people say, you know, we need to do something so we're not spending the county's money on lawsuits against farms. And, and that's basically what we're coming down to. And so this, this would be one more tool to try to save some more lawsuits against the county also.
So you're, you had touched on the twenty acres that you'd like us to be able to give variances for kids coming back. We can't do that. The, the, the challenge with variances is I can't say, I like you, but I don't like that guy. So, and, and that's, and that's the challenge. We under, we understand your request and a couple of us took some pretty good heat for not approving one for that exact reason, because the law's the law in here and we have to be careful because we can get sued over that too.
And I understand.
That's why we're trying to seek some resolution.
Twenty acre law, like, you know, like you have that, that they're not doing.
But there's a need, I mean, because you got, you had the variance, didn't you?
The same, the same people in the same groups of people asking for the twenty acres.
I think we should one talk at a time.
Well, the, the problem that we run into is there's conflicting, so the, the same, and I'm gonna put farmers into one group, the same group of farmers that want twenty acres also want, but not for me, twenty acres for everyone else, but when I want three acres, I should get three acres. And, and again, I, you know, I go back to some of the agribusinesses, if I wanna, you know, let's say I wanna start spraying and I build a shop and have a sprayer sit there, well, I don't need twenty acres of my farmland tied up, but legally, I can't get a variance to get five acres so I can do that. And that's some of the issue. And so how do we find this, this common ground and, and I'll be the first to admit that I don't think the two acres is the, is the way to go. I, I just don't. But we need to figure out a way to make this work for, for everyone, including farmers who are requesting these variances and, and who have issues with the twenty acres.
Joe, I just wanna make a quick comment about, number one, I think from in my, in my mind anyway, a right to farming is a deterrent, that's the script we all did, because if, if you can afford a million dollar order and I can only afford a ten thousand dollar order, the other thing is, um, I guess I didn't realize that, I went into this, we were really blind when we were talking about, well, we come here and these people come here and ask for two acres. And we were told all along, I tell about, what, three months ago or four months ago, that they were doing it because the Financial Lending Institute would not loan on, on more than two acres because of tying it up so when they, if something happened, they had to mortgage off that piece of property. Well, at the meeting, Zane, we were sitting across from the bank, that guy, he said, that has to have been approved. He said, the only reason that they were doing two acres is because they get a cheaper interest rate to do it that way than they do if they were doing four acres. So.
I think that's true except for like that VA, there was a VA loan that that was specific. There's some different government ones that are specific, but yeah.
But most, most housing loans are not that way. Well, we went into a lot of these things, but the hardship was where you can't get funding. Well, they, they could have, they just said they had to pay a half percent of the central interest and then they were, we would have given them.
Right. But even.
Unfortunately, monetary is not a hardship.
Even if, you know, technically though, even if they can't, couldn't get financing, that's, technically, that still shouldn't have been a reason for a variance.
Right. Monetary is not a hardship.
And so that's where, where it's, it's something that we've done since the ordinance was adopted and we've never stuck to it and it's, so now we have this problem on our hands.
Because, I mean, you can't segregate, you know, twenty acres for residents going to the farm. I mean, there's no way you could ever get by doing that. I mean, doing, guy wants to move out to the farm, you gotta do twenty acres, but if a kid wants to come back to farm, you go to two. I mean, there's no, there's no way you could ever do that. I mean, you'd get pretty good, pretty good heat for that, but I mean, but I don't know on any way, if you guys know any way, how, how would my son come back to farm with me or any of my kids for that matter?
You have twenty acres.
Is that all, you just grant them twenty acres?
They have twenty acres, but your, but your, with, with the, with you have, your lifetime of income goes to you.
Okay. Well, that, that's what, that's what I was, you know, because I know.
Joe, do you think that's the way you could do it?
Well, it can be done. What if you have ten kids? I mean.
How many kids?
You should have thought about that.
If you see such.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But realistically, to me, that's not the, uh, it's, to me, that's not a solution because now you're either playing favorites to one kid or. What if you don't have all the?
Most of the variances that were granted, that I remember, were granted to farm families, to kids coming back or kids, maybe they weren't coming back, but they were in the area working at other jobs.
Right.
And, you know, uh, to complicate the balance of the right to farm and the right to buy two acres, that landowner also has some rights. You know, he may be in a financial situation, he may, he may be at an age of life where he, where he asked to sell off some land. And, and he should have the option of that and, and that's, to me, that's when we need to set up these little housing unit areas, designate more, because the population of the county's gonna grow and it's gonna have to spread out. Hopefully, most of it'll be in the non-ag area, but I don't know. As I listen to the conversation, I come down to about five things for discussion, other than the flow and the wording and so forth, but setbacks, lot size, livestock numbers, environmental issues, right to farm, and then I, I added one that hasn't been mentioned, I don't think, but policing the ordinance. Because if you make it, make a law that nobody's gonna follow, you, you better off if you don't make the law, in my opinion. So those six things, maybe there are more, shouldn't take that damn long to figure out.
The optimists among us.
If we locked those doors and said, nobody eats until we come to a resolution on this, we'd have it by.
In a couple hours.
In a couple hours.
That's how they elect the pope, isn't it?
So I do have, are you, go, if you got more, go on, Don.
I'm done.
Okay, I, I do have a question on, um, on the class sizes and regulation and whatnot and, and here again, this is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Zane. Here again, there's conflicting and I know Dennis, we've talked about in the past, but now I'm hearing it from other people too. What, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but what I'm hearing is that we should be regulating these hobby farms. And so here, we've gotten beat up for the last two years because the ordinance says one to two ninety-nine and we've enforced that. And now we're trying to get away from down to one animal unit. And now we're taking heat for not enforcing things on hobby farms.
I think that's where that right to farming would come in effect too. You know, if you have the hobby farm, people know that you're out in the ag, in, out in the ag district, that happens more, that's kind of monitoring them that way.
Right, but it, but I guess my question is, my, I guess my thought on why we're not down to one is the nuisance takes place, but then, one, it goes back to enforcement and regulation. Who's gonna go down and go count if, how many animals you have to be this hobby farm and where your CUP flies and where it lies and doesn't lie? And so my thought is your CUP doesn't come in until later. I mean, when it's a significant, say, number of animals or whatever. And, and the nuisance law, you know, nuisance ordinance takes place for anything below that and you just kind of let things go. But now what I'm hearing is we should be regulating down to one animal unit. And I'm wondering if that's, if I'm hearing it wrong or if that's what the, we're.
You know, the problem is, Joe, and there's, there's actually a couple of bad actors up in our neighborhood whose cows are running free. I mean, there's six, there's six or seven cows that have been running free for four or five years.
One of them's my neighbor, right?
I know, you know. And, and so the sheriff gets called, they actually trap them and haul them to the auction and the guy came and bought them back and took, put them back right out in the field. Nothing you can do. But so us, as larger operations, we spread, our turf is in the wrong, our cow turf is in the wrong place, we're gonna get, we're gonna get trouble. These cows are worth thousands of dollars of hay. I, I buy a lot of hay from one of the neighbors, they, they don't eat the poor hay. And, and. They do not. They know, doesn't it? And, uh, they live, yeah. And we've got a neighbor over to the east of us that, uh, his cow's grown free too and same thing, the sheriff gets called all the time. I don't know, did they make my land or they, they might disappear. Um, I don't know, but so I mean, this, this bad actor thing, it isn't as easy as you, it, it, it's just, like you said, who's gonna, who's gonna police it? Not even our own sheriff department. Because it can't stop.
And, and back to nuisances, there, there are nuisances for people not mowing their yard from twenty twelve, but still isn't resolved. That happens every single year, so I, I'm not, I'm not too hopeful on nuisances getting.
So what's the solution?
We had talked about fifty to one hundred at the bottom.
Can you move your mic?
We had talked about when we were on the zoning, I'm sorry, I'm Kristi Schultz. I'm current chair of the planning and zoning board. Um, and when we were hashing this out together as a board, we had talked about the bottom number for the class F being fifty to one hundred animals and not requiring a DNR permit or anything like that, but having them come up with the manure management plan for the same reasons you guys are talking about with the hobby farmers and those type of people that maybe don't even think that the manure is a big deal. We're not going to make them get a permit from the DNR or anything like that. It was just a way to know what was going on in the county. And then the next tier, I think, was like one oh one to two ninety-nine, and I don't have all of that stuff in front of me because I had to leave straight from school and, and I had to have my brakes done in Nebraska. That was a fun drive, by the way. And I was afraid that I would miss the meeting if I didn't have all of my books. They were, anyway, that, that set aside. So you're right, we, I think we need to work together on those bottom numbers and see what's palatable for everybody on the lower, the lower end of the spectrum. Um, I do have a huge issue, however, with raising that upper limit over ten thousand. I am dead set against that for many reasons, most of which, Yankton County, you can't really compare to other counties. We have a unique situation here and it has been discussed briefly, touched upon, in that we have the Lewis and Clark Lake area, which is second only to the Black Hills for this state for tourism. So I think that it's very important that, um, we find a way to work with small family farmers, just like, I think it was, no, it was Jay Cuts that mentioned that he really doesn't want the great big farm operations to come in because that is not family farming, that is corporate industry. Just because it's ag does not negate the fact that is, it is an industry that produces a lot of pollution to the environment. I think what we do not want to become is Iowa, where they have destroyed ninety-eight percent of their waters are no longer. I'm losing the term. Basically, they're contaminated.
Potable or?
No, they're not potable and, and there, there's a specific term for it and it just.
Probably impaired is what they call it.
Impaired, yeah, yeah, basically, they're, they're polluted. So there is a balance here. I mean, we worked for a long time to try to strike that balance and I know that we can achieve it. What else? Well, someone was talking and saying that we didn't have a waiver. We already have a waiver for the setbacks. That has been in this ordinance for a long time. If somebody wants to live within that setback and somebody wants to put a KFO in, that is in the ordinance, but as I say, I don't have my book here, but I know it's in there. The, they, uh, they can go to them and if they sign a waiver, that setback is forgiven.
But I, I believe it requires a variance process. So that's the, the difference is this would not require a variance process where it does now.
It is in our ordinance for them to have the capability to do that.
And then you have to question if we can give a variance for that, so.
Oh, what else was I gonna say?
That, what you're saying, Kristi, is that if they don't contest something.
Right, right. It's in there. I know it's in there, I've, I've seen it many times. I can't quote you chapter and verse, but.
Is that like a setback for the?
Yeah, it's a setback waiver.
It's a setback waiver.
If somebody wants to put a KFO in and somebody's too close, they can talk to that neighbor and if it's okay with them, they can sign a waiver and they can put it in.
Zane, were you on the board when we did the Petco stare? I know Don was. That was a good one where their neighbors actually came in and supported it. And we passed that and I know there, there was a couple other ones before all this where it did go pretty smoothly back.
As far as concentration, concentration control, I, I don't agree with that as far as saying one, one house on forty acres is not acceptable to me. Um, I think it makes more sense to pick a lot acreage size and stick with that because you're not gonna have nice neat little forty acre increments where you can do that. And then you're just spreading out the population more. I would prefer that you not try to separate the manure into three different classifications. I think that just makes it more complicated and enforcement is not gonna be there. Um, so I would just assume that we, we come together on setbacks and then make those setbacks the law because you can measure that. That is a tangible, concrete thing that can be measured. And they might, they might come in and say, oh, it's a foot this way, foot that way. Even any plat that you have, it says plus or minus this amount of acres. So nobody's gonna get sued over a one foot difference. So I don't think that that's a big worry. Um, and, and special permitted use to have that for an animal feeding operation and have someone blindsided in that way, I think that is a bad idea, especially when they can come back and increase their, um, operation, again, with no notification to the neighbors. Nobody knows it's happening, they can come here, come in and say, okay, I'm gonna double my, my animal feeding operation. And then six months later, yep, I'm gonna double my operation again. And so they can get underneath that limit where they would have to have regulation by bypassing it that way.
Can I address that real quick, Kristi?
Sure, I would love that.
With how, how the intention, I guess, and how this was written with the increase? It would basically be for existing, existing KFOs and, and how I would see that working is existing prior to the home. Existing prior to the home being there. Okay, so let's say, let's say I put a. Let's say I had a one mile setback. I put a CAFO one mile, exactly a mile from your home. I really wanted a larger one. But I'm within the mile, so I drop down a class size. Your home would have existed prior to, so I can't, I can't come in and butt up against you and get. Under the radar and then increase it through that channel. It would more so be if I, if I'm an existing CAFO and you come in a mile from me. Then I can expand because I was there first as a CAFO. That was, is the intention. So it's not so that someone could slide under the.
It doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that. If it was an existing, you know, to me, the who's there first holds water because.
I think it says exist.
It does exist.
A hundred and twenty five percent is doubling it.
No, it's it's a hundred twenty five percent of current operation. So if I'm at a hundred percent of operation.
You said increase by.
In expand to.
To a hundred twenty five percent of.
Okay, so why don't you just say a twenty five percent increase then?
It could be weighted better, yes. The intent was twenty five percent.
And is that a one time expansion or?
Yeah, that's the other thing. How many times are they allowed to do that? If that was a one time expansion, I would be fine with that. A twenty five percent increase.
You know, it's something with that, say you have a conditional use permit for whatever size operation. And then you expand it with a special permitted use. Is your conditional use permit still valid? Because your conditional use permit is for a smaller number of animals than your special permitted uses.
You couldn't, you couldn't put a special permitted use on top of a a conditional use if you held it.
But say I have a conditional use for a thousand animal units and then I come in and get a special permitted use, now I'm at twelve fifty.
But you couldn't.
Why?
Because that would require just a standard, you're in, you're already in the conditional use permit requirement zone, so you don't just come in and get a special permitted use to expand.
What if you're existing? Or or there are some operations that are existing that don't have a conditional use permit that were pre-zoning?
You would.
And and those are allowed to expand under our current ordinance.
By three hundred animal units.
Mm hmm. So if I had a hundred animals, I could go up to four hundred animal units today. And not not need anything.
But that's only three hundred animal units. If you, if you've got a five thousand head. Operation, you can add a whole thousand head to that right now, the way that's written.
Well, not right now. Right now, you could add three hundred animal units, so which one has a larger effect?
You can have an extra thousand. So, yeah, that is a significant difference.
If that farmer was there first, he must expand twice.
Yep, so.
We're not saying he can't expand, but normally they would have to come back and get a conditional use for an increase in their operation.
The intent.
I think they, go ahead, I was.
So what the the intent of this is, is. And I know, I know. Some people aren't gonna like it, but the intent is to. Forego that process because if they're existing and they're, call it a good operator. They can expand if they were there first before, the way this reads, before. Without having to send all the notification, come in for all the meetings, all this and that, that is the intent. They still would need to, if they went up in class, then their set of regulations changes. They still need to abide by whatever they would fit into. But I mean, that is the.
That clause needs to be added there because it's not there.
Yeah, performance standards of five nineteen are applicable to the expansion with exceptions to setbacks.
But if you change classes. Then you have to go back to DNR permitting.
Yeah, you could potentially have a non-DNR operation become DNR permitted with the expansion.
And then they have to become DNR permitted. And they would have to become DNR permitted.
But and and the other concerning thing about that has been with a special permitted use, there's no notification, you know, to the the neighbors and I know.
Right.
I I know, you know, looking at the conditional use permit, I mean, a bar, a bed and breakfast. A church, a daycare, fairground, firework sales, golf courses, those all require, will still require the notifications.
But daycare wouldn't have to notify neighbors if they went from twelve to twenty kids.
I'm sure some neighbors will care, though, and I'm sure some people.
I remember sitting in that chair and thinking, we got a nice short agenda tonight and somebody wanted ten chickens. They were allowed to have them. The ordinance said so, but it was a hobby farm in in the R. One, they had like five to seven acres, but their neighbors did not want them to have chickens and they argued about it for three hours. So that's why I have a problem with no notification being given.
You know, and I think it goes back a lot to the size of the operation. I think of, I tried to apply this to where I live. My family owns seven hundred fifty acres. Okay, so we have a home, we have no animals and and such, but if I wanted to go back to shelling hog manure or sheep manure or something like that. And I wanted to get twenty five lambs and put them in a barn.
Right.
I have seven hundred fifty acres. Should I be able to have twenty five lambs in a barn without having to notify anybody?
Absolutely, because you're under that fifty animal unit number.
If I wanted fifty five. Or something, but you see where I'm I'm going is.
Right, so you say I want fifty cows.
It, or even seventy five, whatever it is, seventy five cows. Should I have to notify? Through a conditional use process that, or should the ordinance say, gee, Sherry, you know, we want to make sure you you know about manure? And there is a quarter mile setback, whatever, if if it is in there. So you need to do this for manure. Yep, you meet the setback or you don't. And there's no reason to have to go through a full conditional use process for that. Now, if I wanted to have five hundred. That's a, that's a pretty good amount of cattle for a new operation. And especially me, who's been out of farming since I was twenty. So should I go through the conditional use process at five hundred and they're gonna be in a barn? Yeah, probably. So I guess, I think the point here with the special uses application is what is that line where, you know what? You gotta have your manure, you gotta meet a setback, but if you're under this line, you don't have to go through the whole process. But if you go over this line. We need to start letting people know. And so is is it fifty cows? Is it a hundred cows? Is it seven hundred cows? There there's someplace in there, I think, we can live and it covers some of the hobby farmer is, you know, if it's one to a hundred. Hobby farmer, you know what? You got manure, you can't dump it in the ditch, you can't do this, you can't do that. It at least is kind of like the right to farm. You've been notified. So if you've been notified, you've you've got some skin in the game. So and I think that's kind of where the special permitted use comes into all of this versus nothing or all of it.
Well, we, we're not saying all of it. We're saying from fifty to a hundred.
Our ordinance today says all of it.
Right, that's what we're working on. Because we had people coming in here saying, I want to have, you know, a a chicken for four H and they thought they had to come in and get a CUP because it was one animal. That's un, that's ridiculous.
If they had a calf, they would. It's one.
That's what I'm saying. One is too small. One is too small. So I'm agreeing with you.
You know, so so that's kind of where the special use, I'm a proponent for special uses because one, we're doing it already and technically we aren't stating we're doing it. So we need to change that in here. And it's, again, that discussion is where, where does that line fall? With the five people who eventually have to vote on it and it'll probably get put to the public. So what's the public gonna view as a fair line?
You know, Kristy, and I'm not gonna argue with you, but you know, if if I was gonna go from. I'd bring in a six hundred head, nine hundred dead, my neighbors would know the difference. Nobody know the difference. I mean, it it it's just a matter of flow. We have no more trucks going in and out. I mean. You'll have, otherwise, our, our management system would still be the same.
Well, we're just saying that that's the way it is right now. You can add three hundred head and not have to come back for a CUP. You can do that right now.
But even going up to this, this twenty five percent or whatever on top of thousand, you have a five thousand head feedlot. You're not gonna notice a lot of difference going to six thousand, sorry to say. It's like some guy, a farmer is going from, they're farming three thousand, if they go to five thousand. Are the neighbors gonna say, well, there's more trucks? Nah, it's just, it's just flow. It's just, it's just, it's just time and flow. You're not gonna see that difference. I really feel all these ordinance changes are truthfully getting way too complicated. Because all it is, we're trying to do is regulate the hog barns that were built in the last three years. That's really what brought all this on. So why can't we just address that elephant in the room and be done?
Okay, so give us quarter mile setbacks.
I've already asked for it.
Yep.
You know, Zane, I think I I agree that the setback thing and and it should be a compromise thing. Less rules, but if we'd increased the setbacks a little bit and just be be done with it. I I mean, I I I think I would agree with you on that. The setback is an issue for new operations, not existing, but new, new ones coming. New ones coming, an increase in a setback, especially class F. And leave everything else alone. I I, from what I'm sounding here is. You guys don't necessarily like the variants, but nobody's come up with a better suggestion, so we could not even address that still, maybe still do variants, adjust the setbacks. And be done with it.
I can't just maybe still do variances, though, because that is, that is gonna.
But the right to farm doesn't stand up in court.
The day, the day. The day the farmer walks away from that twenty acres, they're gonna get, they're gonna be regretting it forever. Because soon as the animal livestock issue is resolved to the favor of those that want it another way, there's gonna be spraying, there's gonna be noise, there's gonna be dust. And they'll just go right down the line and they'll attack.
We haven't had any complaints like that in the last twenty, sorry.
They'll just go right down the line and keep attacking. And I don't think that's right. I think the right to farm and the twenty acres should stay. Now, Kristy.
Well, I was just, I understand that you're, what your concern is. But we have not had any people coming in here and suing people because of the dust. And it's.
They have all over.
We have, we have over the, we have over the, the gravel pit. And somebody mentioned there is nobody else putting on road haul agreements. We've put them on gravel pits, we've put them on heavy haul operations, we've put them on multiple businesses. It's not just CAFOs. Other businesses.
But compared to a gravel pit to a hog barn or a grain gravel of fourteen thousand acres, which we have some that do farm, not in our county, but. We get, we get pigs from the basket going over bridges up in our part of the township that I have reported because they're going with with eighty thousand pound trucks across a six ton bridge.
Yep.
And that's something that probably.
Needs to be addressed.
You know, we already distinguish a commercial grain facility and and it probably is something that should be looked at and addressed with. The size that farms are anymore. If you have a single bin site for ten thousand acres.
Gets pretty heavy.
It gets pretty heavy. And that, you know, it is something that we probably need to look at and I don't know where you.
But there again, where do you set that class of the bin site?
Right, and so that's something that, you know.
Well, that's what the conditional use is for. It's for a case by case basis. I mean, that's double designing of it, right?
You know, the intention of the. CUPs and and some of the haul agreements and this and that, I think, for. You know, animal livestock is certainly picked on in the ordinance. I mean, they're the ones that, that. Have the the regulation. There's no doubt about it. And and some of it is self inflicted, some of it's not. Grain farming. I mean, there's certainly. Similar regulations, just not in the ordinance. There's there's state and and federal regulations on your spraying. And it it would be your, really applicable to our ordinance, to me, would be. Probably a size of your bin loc, you know, a single bin location and a size. Would be equivalent to, you know, putting on some equal regulations, I guess, but.
One thing that's very differently with grain farmers is like, just like this morning and and it happened last week, we had four top load of cows that we sold two weeks ago. When that package said you need to deliver them Monday morning at ten o'clock in Aberdeen, South Dakota, you don't have them there. That contract, which is just a verbal over the phone, is null and void. So if it's crappy weather, it was, it was freezing rain this morning. Those trucks took off and it's like, I hope they get there, but they have to go. We're a grain farmer, if it's freezing rain or if it's terribly muddy, they don't have to go that way. Where we had, they can extend the contract for, that is the only difference. Well, we have to get feed in. I mean, it's.
And that's why some of those, it's to. You know, there's a, to me, there's a a large difference between, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Distinguish, let's say, a housed animal CAFO. There's a difference because when. I mean, you didn't start off with six hundred head of cattle on your farm. You probably started with ten. And you grew and you grew and you learned and you grew and you learned. Where today, you can have a twenty year old kid who graduates college, the bank's gonna give him a loan for a. A brand new facility for twenty four hundred head of hog and he's never fed a hog in his life. And there's things that you don't have the foresight to know. And there's some people who can put up a hog barn and have raised hogs and they know these things and they have that foresight. But a bank probably is not gonna give me a loan tomorrow. To put up a facility, you know, a dry lot facility and house a thousand head of cattle, let's say. But I could do that in a, in a enclosed, you know, or curtain barn. Slatted floor facility. And to me, that's where there's some need for forcing that foresight. Do you have this plan? Do you have that plan? Do you have this and that? It's not to stop anybody. It's actually.
A lot of that, a lot of that comes with, through your lending institution, when you go in and ask for that, that big loan, but they're gonna wanna sue you. You're, you're, you know, it's like the pig barn, these barns often, there's consulting people that come in there.
Oh, yeah.
Tell these people, this is how you run it. And they check and, you know, they're checking if there's something wrong, they search a lot of them.
Yep.
If you're, you're talking such, such a large amount of money, cash flow is that thing that happens every time the system has, you know. I said this since this thing started with these pig barns, pig barns, the pig industry will regulate itself. Because when economics starts changing, we saw it happen in fact in the early nineties when economics changed on all these. Who finished one of these guys and all of a sudden the guys that were growing pigs were losing their butts. Selling, trying to make the same order and they just quit. And let that guy sit in there with an empty building.
So what's the result that happened from that? You got contracted hogs all the way through the cycle. And that risk has been eliminated unless the packer dies.
All it takes in that full system was one bullet and it scooped up everywhere, you know, and it's just, but. The the technology and the the management systems that are in these facilities now with all these farms, I mean. Those are the guys that I tried to hire twenty years ago to come and work on that farm, but they wanted, wanted me to do the work and they wanted to tell me how like to do it. That's how, but that's where the system is now. And if you're not in that system, you're not gonna be in it.
The chairman, he said to warn us, we got ten minutes.
We got ten minutes. Thanks, Don. So how do we round out tonight? We have another speaker. Oh, come on up.
You know, I was sitting out in the hallway listening and and I agree with Don. I think the policing, this zoning ordinance is gonna be a fun. And it always has been. I don't think it's, I don't think that's changed in the whole time of zoning's went on here, but you took out that one thing where you didn't think. But you took out that one thing where you didn't think the zoning administrator should be finding out the trees along the road right of ways and stuff like that. Um, but on the flip side of that, who's going to, who else would, could be able to police that? Because the zoning administrator has the powers to go in on a piece of property where Mike doesn't and the sheriff doesn't. So he's got the property and he's got the, the wherewithal to do that. And I know of three places right now where they should go check those, uh, trees because they should not be where they are at. And my driveway is a poster child for stupidity, um, at my house. Um, and I make sure that nobody else ever has to do what I have to do every day.
Oh, yeah. And I, you're, you're right, Jay. I want to find this quick because I just remember the discussion from planning and zoning and right, I took out that, not that it can't be enforced, it's, the way it reads today is, okay, structures perennial or similar vegetation planted on or immediately adjacent to a road right of way public shall be approved in writing by the zoning administrator prior to construction or planting. And.
No, I think there's something in there that says that has to be so far back from the right of way.
And that's, we want to keep.
And we want to keep that. And, but the zoning administrator really is the only one that has the power to enforce that because he can go on the property and measure so back and stuff like that.
But what's, what's being removed is that they would have the authority to grant you to put to.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, that'd be fine too.
Yeah, that's, we don't want, we don't want Gary to say, oh, you could, you could plant this big tree in this, you know, on this corner. Just say, stay back from the corners would be.
How's all the hash, hashish plants grow?
You got, you got eight minutes.
I'm a little concerned about the fact that we limit the growth. That really, really bothers me. And in all of the head count and how we're doing things, nothing has been brought up that, where's the economic threshold? Okay, I want to feed livestock, whether it be chickens or turkeys, snakes, worms, whatever. How many do I have to raise to make a living? I, I haven't heard that anywhere. And I, I've heard about, well, your comments about, well, these people have never done it. My son was involved in raising pigs until he was about ten, twelve years old. We got out of him. And when he hit his forties, he started in again big time. You would not believe the management, like Dennis said, that comes with the contrary. Because they don't want to stick that much money into livestock and have some moron taking care of it that's not doing the job.
Right.
And they've got this real neat thing where you can go in once a week and check your printouts. And you can compare yourself to everybody else. Say, okay, in your nursery, you had them thirty-four days, here's what they gained, here's what the feed conversion was. Here's what your death loss was. I'll have you know right now that there are two hog producers in Yankton County with CAFOs that are fighting over first place in death loss as far as the lack thereof. And they're both very competitive about it. And I don't have their permission, so I'm not going to say their names, but they really, it's a very friendly competition. The integrator just loves it because he eggs them both on. They allow you two percent and they're under a half. And I, I'll be quite honest, the, the safety and the health of the herd is so much better than the old way. And that's how you get the efficiency and that's how they can crank out the numbers that they do with the small line of profit, but everybody makes money. And it takes money to make the wheels on the bus go around. I just got my tax notice. I saw that. Anyway, I, I just don't like the fact that animal ag is the only thing with limits. And the other ones I was going to mention is the fact that, okay, I know people where the great-grandfather had cows. The grandfather had cows. The father had cows. The sons had cows and the grandsons now have cows. They didn't have to get a permit because their grandfather dimmed. And I can guarantee to you that there are more cows now in those operations than there were when the great-grandfather had it. And I don't really think that's fair that they can expand. And if we put them in a building, we can't.
Commissioners, any closing comments? We're, we're on three minutes to go before our deadline.
February fifth, nine AM.
That is the next scheduled meeting.
That'll be tough to get us livestock guys to.
We had one in the evening, one in the morning for, for other folks, so.
I, I mentioned a couple of grain farmers that they're hopefully going to have to come.
We do appreciate all your guys' candid comments. Really, it was a, it was a good conversation.
One, one, one thing that I would note, uh, just from looking at participants of the conversation. I'm kind of wondering why those people that have been on a bi-weekly basis coming to our meetings and saying, we know, we need to go to two acres and we need to do this and we need to do that, are not in this room.
Maybe they could come next week.
Okay, so.
So if there's elderly people, they won't come to you like this.
My, my only concern of that is, is that either they intend on defeating anything that we do through an election? Or they don't really care.
Anyone listening is highly encouraged to submit written comments. If you care to, you can go to the county's website and contact any of the commissioners. You can certainly mail, snail mail a hard copy to the government business, uh, office building here as well. So address is on our website or in the phone book. So with that, there is one last public comment. Would anyone like to make another public comment? Public comments closed. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And it's not.